Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the 6:30 hour of Monday, October 22nd. Well, I was gonna say welcome to Monday, October 22nd, but that happened earlier this morning. Select Board meeting room. We're on the second floor of Groton Town Hall. Today's agenda is the announcements and reviewing this agenda for the public, followed by public comment period. At 6:40 PM or prior, we should begin the town manager report. We have a condensed report today in order to make time for a joint session we have later. Today's agenda is our schedule, followed by ratifying several appointments of the town manager. One for trails worker and many, thank you very much, for election workers. We will consider establishing and appointing a Green Communities Committee. Then we will consider approving the ballot information book for the November 6th, 2018 town election. And then we will consider approving a one-day beer and wine license for Groton Wellness for Ladies Night out, to be held on Thursday, October 25th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. If we conclude that business before 7:15, we'll just take a recess and then we will come back here to be in joint session with the Finance Committee to establish fiscal year 2020 budget guidance for the town managers' FY 2020 proposed operating budget. Oh, we'll probably, prior to that, try to do the regular scheduled minutes for the liaison reports and the regular scheduled minutes for October 1st, and then a quick review of ongoing issues prior to the 7:15. So our goal here is to wrap up our business before that meeting and then be in joint session with the FinCom and then retire once we have completed the business with FinCom. All right, that being said, are there any announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to let everybody, remind everybody that early voting has commenced here at the Town Hall. We had a lot of voters come in today. There were set hours. You can go to the Town website and see the set hours for the early voting, but I believe it runs through November 2nd. So I encourage anyone interested in getting their vote out of the way now to feel free. There are two ballots that you'll be getting. You'll have the statewide election ballot, and then you'll have the local election ballot as well. So there's two separate elections taking place right now.
And maybe if we get a message to Mike, I did encounter a couple of citizens that were looking for early voting that came in through the back door, and it's very hard just the all the way down the hall to that. So maybe a sign right on the wall, right inside that back door saying, "Proceed to the front." Because I don't think people that haven't been here before know the difference between the front doors and the back doors of the building. Certainly since parking's easier in the back many times.
Yep.
All right, any other announcements? Yes, Becky Pine?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the fact, I think many people are aware, that there was exciting activity in Groton today. Filming of the movie Little Women with a star-studded cast. And there was filming, I understand, both at the old Groton burial, at the old burying ground on Hollis Street, and also on Gibbet Hill. And I know that there were some questions asked and answered by the town manager, but I thought it would be useful to share some of that information publicly.
Yep. Would you like me to do that?
Yeah, and then I'll add maybe a little bit more.
Yep, so the film is Little Women, and they approached us back in September, wanting to shoot the movie here in Groton. We alerted the Select Board via email of that process. We worked with the police department and the location managers to map out, and the school department, to map out the shooting locations, details. The details were paid 100% by the film company. They had, I think, four police officers all day long, and they covered those details 100%. They also made a donation to the old burying ground committee for use of the old burying ground, and I'm sure they dealt with the Gibbet Hill people as well to deal with them. But they tried to make things as easy as possible for the residents. We tried to make sure that the town wasn't impacted. But we were always excited when somebody wants to showcase the town of Groton.
I personally felt that, and feel that it's very exciting and it's very positive that Groton was selected for the filming. The book, Little Women, was written by Louisa Mae Alcott, who lived in our area. She lived in Concord and Harvard. And I think that the choice to film in Groton reflects well on our ability as a town to preserve our scenic landscapes and our historic sites, so that they could be used for a very high-quality period historical film. And I understand that there also, or at least a couple of crew members who ate their lunch at the Salt and Light Cafe today, so I'm pretty sure that there's other economic benefits coming to our town. And it's gonna, we're gonna look great on film, but we, as far as I can tell, have a long way to wait. I don't think this film is gonna come out until Christmas of 2019.
That's not a long time in the film industry. That's a short time. All right, any other announcements from the board? Anything from the public? All right, let's move on. Town Manager Report, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, I've made some appointments, and I'd asked the board to ratify them tonight. Jonah Brannigan to the Trails Committee, Nathaniel Rainey, Peter Cunningham, Daniel Emerson, Alex Woodall, Art Press, Robert Pichet, Abby Miller, Edward Perkins, Alicia Black, Mike DiCipio, and Judy Geiger as election workers. And I will tell you, with these election workers being appointed, Mike Bouchard now has every shift covered for the election on November 6th. I want to thank everybody that stepped forward and came out to help out the town clerk. He's very, very pleased that he's gonna have everything covered. So we're in good shape for November 6th. No town employees are gonna have to work that day, so Town Hall will remain open.
Let's rephrase that statement.
No town employees will have to work the polls that day.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you, Barry. No town employees will have to work the polls that day, so Town Hall will remain open on November 6th. So, very, very happy to make these appointments. I'd ask the board to consider ratifying them today.
Should we do two separate motions, one for trails, one for election workers?
I think you can do them all at once, unless, John, you want us to do Judy separately. I'll leave it up to you.
Well, yeah, I need to abstain from whatever the vote is.
So let's do...
Let's do everybody but Judy.
Yeah, we can do that, so...
Could I just ask a question? I know we asked when this first came up about whether we, as Select Board members, could be workers, and the answer was no.
Emphatically.
And I believe that's written into the charter. But FinCom members are not under that restriction?
Nope, nope.
It's only Select Board members.
Select, yeah.
That's what I assumed.
Yep.
Yes, we get all the privileges and none of the benefits.
So I move that we appoint, or ratify, the appointment of Judy Geiger as an election worker?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions?
Yay, me.
That's good, all right, so we got that one, thanks.
I will make a motion that we ratify...
One comment. After this process, I discovered that the 6:30 point, not just the 18.
Look, they gotta some morning people in the world.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we ratify the remainder of the appointments as presented. I'll second.
All right, moved and seconded for all the others listed and spoken about earlier. Any other questions, discussions, ideas? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I heard that unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's discussed...
And thank you to everybody who's come forward to make this really challenging, yet important election work. It's a percolating effort to get twice as many people to work twice as many polling stations, well, polling locations, polling ballot locations within the polling stations.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, as discussed, oh, I gotta get Mike to fix this. As discussed at last week's meeting, John, Becky, and I got together to talk about whether or not we needed to form a committee to assist the board in determining if we should pursue becoming a Green Community. The three of us met, and what we're recommending to the board is, instead of establishing a formal committee for this purpose, the town manager would establish a working group to gather information and put together a process and recommendation to the board. The working group would be made up of myself, Becky, Bruce Easton from the Light Commission. Becky and John did agree to serve on the committee. Business manager from the school, Mike Knight, very excited, got a very enthusiastic reply from him to help us out. Kevin Kelly is also very excited to work on this. Tom Delaney and Takashi, so Tata, who is our land use director. So we'll investigate the impact of adopting the stretch code, and we'll establish a plan to meet the 20% reduction in energy over the next five years, and then we'll bring it back to the board. So that's our recommendation.
All right, John, yes?
I am not a member of the committee.
Correct.
Did I put your name in there?
No, you said it, though.
You said that they both agreed that they would participate, although...
I just wanna be clear.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Let's make it clear that, yeah, John, even though he said he would, is not the selective member, and I believe at our last meeting it was made clear that we didn't want two Select Board members on the committee.
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
No, that's okay. It's in black and white. Anybody else have any questions, concerns, ideas?
I assume, Mark, that this group will also look at potential cost or downside to this process for the town?
Yes, that's our entire purpose. The way I see this is, I really wanna get an understanding of the stretch code. We're gonna bring the state out to meet with us, to go over the process. We'll invite Select Board members, if they want to attend that working session, to listen in to the conversation. But yes, I want all the benefits and detractions from doing it, so yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we don't need an official vote on this?
Nope, I just wanted you to get comfortable with it.
But we do want to make sure that we're comfortable before we move on to the next item. Does anybody else have anything on this before we continue? Okay, thank you to Ms. Pine and Mr. Geiger for putting extra time in to come with a resolution. I appreciate that. Okay, number four.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, moving along, we put together the information packet. You see it here. I sent it out earlier today to you. I apologize for the lateness in getting it to you, but it's pretty similar to what I gave you last Monday night. The one thing that changed was the no argument was edited a little bit. Town Council has signed off on this and approved it as is required. Becky did catch a couple of typos, which we corrected. Thank you, Becky. And I would ask the Select Board to approve the issuance of this booklet. We will get it to the printer tomorrow, get mailed out Friday. It needed to be out by next Tuesday. We're gonna get it out earlier. And we'll have copies of it here available at Town Hall when people come in for early voting as well, starting tomorrow.
You said no vote, or I think you meant the against argument?
The against argument.
Rather than the in favor argument?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments by any members of the board? I hear nothing. Any comments from the public? Okay, I hear, this is the easiest meeting ever, I hear a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much for your work on that, and good luck to the voters.
I think it's a little ironic, I know we have no power over this, but here we do have people voting already, and we haven't even sent this thing out.
Yeah, the early voting throws a little bit of a twist in it. The law requires us to get it out seven days before the election, so...
Right, and I know we're following, we're doing it what we're supposed to.
It really should be seven days before early voting.
Early voting, yeah.
We should have, yeah.
Things don't always catch up, right?
They will. So by tomorrow, tomorrow, this will be available at the polls. And we'll put it on the website tomorrow morning as well. Mr. Chairman, Groton Wellness has requested a one-day beer and wine license for Ladies Night, to be held on Thursday, October 25th, from 6:00 to 9:00. I'd asked the board to approve that request this evening.
Any questions?
I assume they have all their ducks in a row.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I've learned by now that nothing comes forward here without tips and...
Don will not let that get on the agenda without having all the...
Don's got this checklist like five miles long, so...
Absolutely, it's important for the public to recognize that.
It is important for the public to know that we're going through all that stuff.
So I move that we grant, we requested one-day beer and wine license for Ladies Night for Groton Wellness for Thursday, October 25th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Been moved?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Anything from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
That's okay. Late eyes are good eyes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do a brief review of the ongoing issues list for the board's information.
Thank you.
The senior center building project continues going well. We do have a little hiccup with some of the steel submittals, but we're working our way through that. We should get the steel approved and the installation sometime first week of December. So we're a couple of weeks behind, but nothing that can't be made up, so I'm very pleased with the progress of the project. And I'll continue to keep the board updated. We have our weekly meetings Thursday mornings with the architect and the contractor. I don't think I stress this enough to the board, but I want to let you know that our clerk of the works, Bob Garside, is really doing a great job for us, and we're very, very lucky to have him overseeing the project. He's our eyes and ears, and he's doing a great job. With regards to the policy on major initiative planning, that's on hold right now. That's Josh's issue, and obviously, based on what we talked about last week, that we're not going forward with that at this time. Once Josh comes back, we'll get working on that again. The operational audit recommendations implementation, I wanted to ask the board, do you want me to leave this on as an ongoing issue now that we have the sheet set up for follow-through? Or do you want to leave it on here and then just continue to monitor it that way? I'll look to the board for information.
So our discussion conclusion last week was that we would add it to the quarterly review cycle. So that's a question for the board. It's going to be incorporated into a quarterly process. Does it qualify, therefore, as an ongoing issue, or do we relegate it to the, it's in process and we're monitoring it quarterly, getting updates?
What does that quarterly monitoring mean?
That when we go over the goals and objectives, we go over the list to let you know if there's any update or changes to the audit recommendations. Could be brief, it could be lengthy.
Yeah, because many of them can't be dealt with for a certain amount of time.
Yep. No, that seems fine to me.
Yeah.
Don?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, once, now that it's started, I only expect to hear if there are problems.
Right, and that would be the case, clearly...
Budget, those should come right back quick, but...
Clearly, caveats and other things will always come to our attention.
Absolutely.
And I just know that we're adding meeting milestones and projects along the way would be great, so yes.
All right, so I'll remove that from the list.
Thank you.
Charter approval implementation of new provisions, I have an update. I received an update from the town clerk today. It's made its third reading in the House, and we found a senator to sponsor it, since we don't have one.
Who's that?
I can't remember his name. I knew you were gonna ask me as soon as I said that.
Okay, all right.
But we do have a senator to sponsor it. So it's in the third reading in the House, which is great news. So once it goes through the House, it'll go into the Senate, and I expect it to be approved within the next month or so. So things are moving very nicely on that.
Great.
Is it potentially Jamie Eldredge?
It wasn't him. That's not the name.
All right.
I will get that name for the board. But we're very excited that we have a senator sponsoring it. Local room occupancy tax, we're gonna talk about the expected revenue tonight, so we'll talk about that later in the evening. The committee charge for capital planning, I sent out an email after last week's meeting to the board. I've had a conversation with a couple of selectmen on their reaction to my email. So I think we need to schedule this for an upcoming meeting, which we will. Route 119 sidewalk installation is ongoing, no update on that. Recreational marijuana, after the November 6th election, I will move that from the list, because I think the board did everything they had to do there. No update on the Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study. The task force to consider having a full-time department, they met this evening, their agenda, they're continuing to look at statistics. I expect them, their goal is to have a recommendation to the board in time for the budget, so...
It's gotta come, a few weeks away.
That's gonna be kinda quick, yeah. So I would assume sometime in the next month or so, they should wrap up their work. Library roof repairs ongoing, highway garage renovations. I will have a proposed, I'm sorry, I will have a proposed building committee to the board next week for consideration. I have some great names that have come forward. I'm very excited about it, and I will put that on the agenda next week. The RFPs for the engineer and the architect to do on Wednesday, as well as the clerk of the works. So hopefully I'll get a building committee up and running, and we'll get going from there. No update on the Pepperland landfill, and as far as incorporating the OPEP funding into the operating budget, I'm working on that with town council and the town accountant. So hopefully I'll have that resolved soon. So that's my update on the ongoing issues, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions on ongoing issues?
I just have a kind of logistical question. If we were to incorporate E and N into tonight's budgetary guidance, is that sufficient, that we could potentially take them off of here?
I would say yes.
I certainly think E would come off tonight, after tonight, after it's discussed. N seems like more of a legal question, challenge, that we need to get resolved, and so once that's resolved, I think we should...
No, no.
So I think, I would agree with you with E. I would wait till we get that legal situation covered with N, because that seems more like a nuance of the MGLs rather than anything that we don't want to do or do want to do right.
Yep.
Is everybody okay with that on the board?
Seems fine.
I don't wanna be unilateral in any of these decisions. Okay, great. All right, any liaison reports? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No liaison reports. Minutes, regular scheduled meeting minutes of October 1st, 2018.
I move we approve the minutes of October 1st, 2018?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, concerns, ideas, challenges?
There was one small typo. It's really not terribly...
Did you send that to Don?
I didn't.
All right, it's okay, I mean, typos are not substantive.
I don't know why you'd really do it.
So we can send those even once they're approved and get them fixed.
Can I just tell you, do your lesson? No?
What?
Sorry.
Send those in, it's easier to get those done electronically, if they're not substantive. All right, all those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions? No, all right. So we will, having included the normal business, we will now sit in recess until 7:15.
Okay, so, Don, can I tell you the typo? Give me one minute. I'll come down.
All right, well, I'm gonna call the Finance Committee to order, since we haven't been called to order, and I'm assuming...
We're in session.
It's still in session. And so this is a joint meeting with the Select Board and the Finance Committee to provide FY 20 budget guidance to the town manager as well as his finance team. And so with that, I'm gonna hand it over to the town manager to give us an update as to where we are.
Yeah, I prepared a memorandum that I sent out, an email that I sent out to the Finance Committee and the Select Board last Friday. Bud Robertson and I got together Friday morning to go over numbers, because my understanding was some angst at the previous FinCom meeting on the use of a word that Bud and I promised we would never use in a sentence together. So I'm gonna try to avoid that as much as possible. But I had inadvertently included, excluded debt in total town budget. I had to say it. I didn't do that, that was an oversight. So I've corrected the number, and I've updated the chart to show you, but removing that number from the anticipated increase in the municipal budget, change it by .14% from 2.4 to 2.54%. I certainly wasn't trying to minimize the increase. With regard to the anticipated increase in the school district assessment, I agree with what Allison said to me last week. The first, the last thing I ever wanna do is to cause any controversy between the schools and the town. I wanna work cooperatively with them. I think we have a good, strong working relationship with the school committee and the school administration. I wanna continue that. So if I came across as trying to do anything to that relationship, that was not my intention at all, and I apologize for the perception that was put out there. I was just sort of pointing out that Groton can't dedicate all new revenues or a substantial portion of those new revenues to one department. And that's the only thing I was trying to point out, so we need to talk about it. But Bud and I, when we went through the numbers Friday morning, the one thing that we really wanna make clear is that for the school district, state aid makes up 27% of their revenues. It only makes up 6% of the town revenues. So if the state level funds state aid for the town, which they've done for the last several years, the town can absorb that within our operating budget, because 6% isn't a really large portion of operating revenues. When it's almost 30% of your operating budget, it makes it more difficult. And I think that's something that we need to grapple with as a community, and we need to deal with. So that was the point I was trying to make last week, and I apologize if it came across any different than my intention was to put those numbers on the table. With regard to the room occupancy tax, I have not included that in our projections, but I wanted to talk about that with you tonight. A preliminary estimate for consideration that our assessor put together, in working with Jonathan, going over the numbers, the average room price of the Groton is $200. Some are $187, some are $229, so we just said, let's use $200 as the average number. There are 60 rooms. If they had 100% occupancy every night in that building, they would generate $4.3 million of revenue. That's if they were totally banged out every night. 3% of that is $131,400. Effective July 1st, 2019, we go into the 3% occupancy tax. So to figure out what we should budget for next year, we said, okay, what if they were 30% occupancy? 30% occupancy would be $39,420. 40% occupancy would be $52,000. And 50% occupancy would be $65,700. What number should we use, and how should we use that number? I think that's a discussion that the Select Board and the Finance Committee should get together and talk about tonight, and try to come up with some rationale. I think, I think I was leaning towards the 40% number as a starting point. We won't know for sure until July of 2020 what that number actually is, and then we'll double it, because it's the intention of the Select Board to put an article on the warrant to increase that number to 6% for year two. So my recommendation to you tonight is to use about $50,000 as a revenue, and decide how you wanna just put it into the general revenues of the town, or do you wanna do something different with it? That's what you need to decide. And then finally, there was some concern that I was lowering the town's increase, the town's savings in the county retirement assessment due to the fact that we paid it off last year. This allowed the town to save $108,000 in county retirement for FY 20, which is nice. The actual budget increase is $80,581, according to the treasurer. So if we were to count the increase, the anticipated increase in the municipal budget would be $580,000 versus the $379 that I'll show you in a minute, and the increase in the budget would be 3.8%, not the 2.54%. My feeling is, that's a savings that the town earned, and it should go towards the town's municipal operating budget, because it's part of the town's budget. It's directly for municipal employees. So I've updated the chart, and I wanted to go over that with you tonight. The anticipated 2.5% increase is $765,425. That may change a little depending on what the final new growth number comes in from the assessors, which we should have in the next couple of weeks. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. The new growth we're calculating at $20 million in value, which translates into $381,000 in revenue, tax revenue. Now, in the five-year projection that we put forward back in the end of the summer, we were calculating $500,000, which is about $25 million in new revenue, in new growth. We knocked it back to 20 million. I asked Jonathan to give an update as to why we're using the number 20 million. So, with your okay, I'd like Jonathan to update the two boards on that.
So last year, we projected 22.5, and we came in higher than that. We added, yeah, the income, the end, I mean, to play, also four more, four more. So what, you know, we're kinda like 18 months out, it's like using a crystal ball, and trying to figure out, you know, what's gonna be built, and what might may come into fruition, what may not. And just based on permits, I keep, you know, I've talked with Takashi, who's a layman, and we've talked frequently about, you know, what projects are coming down the pipe and try to estimate it that way. So, yeah, a few developments that are near the end of development, a couple of new ones coming forward, so with that, I felt comfortable estimating, well, 20 million down, 2.5 from the previous year. So, you know, I mean, if something comes into play really fast, that they get permitted, and it all depends on how fast the developer wants to build the project, you know, we had a 14-unit detached condominium complex be shovel-ready, and you go 14 in a year. So if that happens, then it's probably a little more, it just depends on, you know, So, if that happens, then it might be a little more, it just depends on, you know, what you're building, and how eager the builder is to build these things out really fast.
So, we, so we, thank you, Jonathan. That's a great explanation. So we're using 20 million in value for next year.
When did you say market was gonna be? No?
The new growth for fiscal year 19, this is the fiscal year 20 estimate, we should know by the end of October, beginning of November, right?
Yeah.
That's the last thing to get certified before we come, before the board to set the tax.
And yet money then, let's assume it's more.
Then that, 765 will be higher.
Yeah.
The unexpendanted tax capacity will be higher. So we'll have more levy capacity into next year, based on what that number is. I think we're pretty close. I don't see it being too much more. It might be a few thousand dollars here or there, or maybe, I don't know, what do you think? For FY19?
Okay, so we're gonna come to 22.5?
Well, we're gonna be around 27.
Okay.
So...
It could be, yeah, it could be 20. Right now, it's trending at about 28. It depends on, I mean, I have to, everything has to run through the state, so...
And so that number is based on 27,500,000 dollars worth of new growth for fiscal 19, that gave us a 2.5% increase in the unexpendanted tax capacity. So you might get a little bit more, but we'll know better in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, just thinking, you know, 5 million is about 92,000, 93,000 in actual revenue, 5 million in growth. So for a million, it's not so big.
About 20 grand.
Do you remember what we estimated for the last three fiscal years?
In fiscal year, in fiscal year 18, we estimated, no, fiscal year 17, we estimated 17.5. We came in around 25. Last fiscal year, we estimated 22.5. I think we're gonna come in around 27. And this year, we're estimating 20. So, you know, we, as you know, we're very conservative with our guesses.
So last year, we estimated what?
22.5 million, and we came in around 27, 28.
At the rate that permits are coming in, do you have a sense of the rate that permits are coming in? Does it match?
Things have slowed down, things have slowed down, things have slowed down year over year.
I have a question, though. So we just approved the sewer capacity for the so-called starter homes.
Yep.
I know some of the development down there had to be done over time. Is that, is there any limit on that, though?
We're not sure when he's planning on starting those. I don't know if he's gonna do 11 in a year. We did calculate some of those into the 20 million, but it's tough to say, Becky. Like Jonathan said, if he builds all 11 upfront, that's a good chunk of money. We hope he does, because...
Is his over 55 development?
Has he started that yet?
Yes, yeah. He has one building up without building framed, and he's, he has two duplexes that I think he's hanging on to personally, that is gonna be ready to go for final occupancy in the next couple of weeks, I think, to be, to know what the rental companies, the finance teams.
So that's also in our 20 million dollar estimate. We don't see as much, you know, we know Shaw's is coming forward to hook up to the sewers, four corners. I don't know how quickly they're gonna get something in the ground. So, you know, that could be, that could be a bonus if they decide to build those last three pads that they have there. So I'm comfortable with 20 million, obviously, over the next couple of weeks, as we're putting the budget together, the next couple of months, we're putting the budget together, we'll monitor what's going on and those, and if we have to adjust that number, the Finance Team and I will adjust that number. Unexpendanted tax capacity, we have 81,000. Estimated receipts, as we said last year, we would slowly start ticking them up over the next several years. I want to do it on a very slow, methodical basis. We ran up 100,000 last year. You know, we're bumping it up 80 at this point this year. That number can change by 50,000, depending on what you do with the room occupancy tax, which I'm sure we'll talk about. And so we're anticipating right now, you know, between 1.3 and 1.35 million in new growth, in new revenues for next year, which I think is really strong, very comfortable with that. Until you start looking at some of our preliminary expenditure estimates. Neshoba Tech scares me, and I'll tell you why. It's, we're starting to see a trend of more students going to Neshoba Tech. There right now are gonna be five new students, based on our population. There were 39 students in that school this year. There are, there are gonna be 44 students for next year. And the troubling trend is there are 13 in the freshman class, 13 in the sophomore class, 12 in the junior class, and nine in the senior class. So to me, those nine drop off, and if the trend continues, you're gonna see between 13, 12 and 13 students coming in. So I see that as an increase over time continuing to affect our budget, because that is purely based on school population. There's a formula amongst the eight communities. So we're estimating a $100,000 increase in Neshoba Tech next year. I won't know the final number until they certify their budget sometime in February, but we're gonna hold a placeholder for a $100,000 increase in that assessment for next year. Groton Dunstable, according to their projections, they need a 5.33% increase in their operating revenues, which translates into $1,077,000. Health insurance, we're bumping up 10% as a placeholder for right now, could be less. County retirement, you see there's a reduction of 108,000, as we talked about earlier. Salary, based on the current agreements, I'm carrying 190,000, but I see that probably being a little bit less, because in that number is every sty pen, snow and ice and everything in there. I just took the total salaries, multiplied it by 2% to get that number. So I'd say that's more a placeholder than anything else, until we get into the actual numbers. Keep in mind, one of the things that we negotiated this year is for the department heads, which are the higher-paid employees, any salary increase, performance incentive is a one-time cash payment. So we may consider using free cash to offset a portion of that 190,000. So there is a potential for some savings there. Expenses, I just threw in a placeholder, 1% increase. Debt service in levy, which I think is important, that is to pay off some of the things that we're doing in the levy limit, paying down some debt. Based on our projections, we're gonna need about $10,000 more than what we have currently budgeted. Medicare is a percentage of the payroll, 1.45% of the payroll, so we're missing 8,000. And then the two new firefighters, a full-year increase, as we talked about previously, will be another $80,000. So right now, we're anticipating new expenses, and again, please remember, this is very, very preliminary, about 1.5 million dollars. So the total municipal budget with all debt is 15.8. The total municipal budget without excluded debt is 14.9. The anticipated increase is 379,000 or 2.54%. Those are the numbers. And again, it's 3.8% if you don't give me credit for the 108,000 savings in county retirement. So, I look for guidance. David?
Mark, can you go back to the salary line? Did you say the 190,000 includes or does not include incentive?
It does include incentives.
It does include incentive pay.
So that's, I think it's high. I just, I'm holding a big placeholder. Last year, David, with incentives, with increases, it was $140,000 total. So now granted, because of the union contracts this year, we're starting with a higher base because of the health insurance savings. So that's why I bumped it up a little bit. I don't know if it'll be that much.
So when you say based on current agreements, how, how do the current agreements?
2% across the board for all employees, for fiscal year 20.
So, but that includes incentives?
That includes incentives on top of that. I threw in a little extra for...
So current agreements and an assumption on incentives, okay.
Correct. Yep. And we're going through that right now.
Further questions? Okay, comments? Proposals?
I'll start.
What?
I'll be the stalking horse. So then we can beat up my numbers. Mark and I did go through the numbers, and I think, you know, we agreed that these are the numbers. I think that...
Violently agreed.
Huh? Violently agreed. We violently agreed that these are the numbers. So I think there's a couple of big unknowns, like the school number, which I have no clue what the school is. This is their number, so hopefully they'll come a little bit lower than this number, but let's assume they don't, just for now, because I don't know. It would say that the 254, to me, it seems like, based on what you just said, we're probably not that far off of being almost back to not having a problem with those 254, based on what you said. If in fact you use 50K, I used 40 in my numbers, but you said 50 for the, so that's 50K. So we're looking for 250, right? So 50K there. As worried I am about as you are in the Shova Tech, 100K sounds like the outside big number. It could be 50 to 75, 50 to 100, I think 75, based on what they historically have charged us per student. It seems like 75, unless there's a lot of other stuff going on, so it could be 100, but it seems like it might be 75.
And then one of the, Patricia, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there some roof debt that's coming on board?
They had mentioned at their budget presentation last year to be on the lookout for some capital improvements, that they were planning for fiscal '20. They didn't go into detail, but they just put us all on, on notice.
I don't know. I'm just going by what the average student cost was, so that was like, so maybe 25 there. The fire, the 80K is a little bit high, because it was, should be like, you know, 72. And I would think, based on the fact that they, it was mentioned, there might be some overtime savings because of having another person coming in, and the fact that they have underspent because of the 73K or whatever we gave them, whatever the number was. I would think that between the eight and the overtime, and the 73, which you're gonna use part of that anyways, we'd probably save about 80 there, maybe, all combined, eight overtime, and the fact that we saved 30 or 40 because of that other number. So if you pick 80 there, you look, it says we're short at this time about 100K. Which could be, you mentioned salaries, it could be, hopefully the high school comes in lower, not higher, if they come in. So it seems like we're almost within striking distance of not having a $250,000 problem unless something else happens. So we're within striking distance, and I don't like the, I mean, I prefer to put some cushion in the numbers, because we use it for things like the school capital, our capital, which is important at the end of the year, because without that, we don't have capital. And historically, you know, we've run the one to 1.2 million over the last two years, which are, to me, are normalities. So, I think the number, if we go in with the 254, I think there's ways to get the 254 down, if in fact you can't find anything, you know, if the numbers all roll up to the top. So there's an increase, and I know, you know, some people don't like putting any revenue in there at all, they'd rather keep it up, you know, like the room tax. I just think it should be something there, because zero doesn't seem to make sense.
I think 50, like I said, Bud, I think 50 grand is a good number. If you want to use it as a general fund revenue, because one of the issues is how do we account for the room tax? We use it as a general issue to offset the overall operating budget, or do we target it to something? We were talking about OPEB before. I had said, why don't we use that towards OPEB, but we came up with a different policy, which seems to be working. So, and I know FinCon's gonna talk about that tonight. So, I think the 50 should go into our general fund revenues, and I think 50 is a good number.
Yeah, so I'm saying is, I don't think this is a, even though it looks like it's a scary $250,000 problem, I don't think it's a, that's a as big a problem as we think, based on what I just heard you say. And we put stuff in there we didn't have, and I think some...
You know, I like to be very...
No, I understand.
I'm way, way in advance of the actual budget, so...
So for guidance, 254 to me, you don't have, first of all, you don't have, right now, there is no 254, because it's the wrong way. You've gotta find out how to get to, how you want to spend the money. So 254 to me is like the highest number we should be at, because it seems like this way to get that number down. So going into the preliminary budget, 254 you can't have, it wouldn't, you'd be at zero to, in order to fund everything, matter of fact, you have to come up with a number. So I think 254 is the highest number we should have. But based on what we need to do with OPEB and school capital and our capital, I'm okay with 254, knowing you're not, you can't even get it yet. You gotta figure out how to get it. By all these other things we just talked about, which includes all this other stuff. So even though we say 254, you may never get to 254, because you may not have enough money to get to 254. If the schools come over the eye, and you can't convince them to come down, you might be at 1%. But I think if it was only 1%, you could get there. You know what I'm saying? I don't think there's a problem, I mean, you gotta do stuff, but it's not like a difficult, to me, it's not difficult to get there by squeezing a little bit of the fire department, because it's got extra money. Maybe put in 30K, a 40K of room tax. So I think 254 is a, is a, even though it's negative, you can't, you'll never get familiar with a negative budget.
Can't.
Right. So 254 says you're gonna find 250K to get to 254. And that can only be by revenue of schools. Because this, again, this is a municipal budget. This is not include the school.
Correct.
You know, we're talking 254 includes the schools coming in flat.
So from that comment, your guidance that you'd propose at this point would be growth of no more than 2.4 without excluded debt, as well as obviously a balanced budget without an override?
Yeah, it'd be 2.5. Yeah, that's right.
But you also sort of implied balanced budget without an override?
Yes.
Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. I'm not...
Because that's what he does.
No way I'm proposing an override.
I'm just saying to get to that number is things that you can potentially get to if the schools stay flat, and we don't find a lot of other revenue, like Jonathan always says, well, we got this other stuff that came in, so it's another 30 or 40K in tax capacity, which we're gonna have, just because if it happens.
Art?
I tend to look at the revenue number a lot, and I think the 50K for room tax is, I'll live with it. I think it's conservative. My numbers are more like 58 to 68 for year one, about a 3%. Knowing what the actual rack rate is at the Groton Inn right now, plus what the occupancy is gonna be. So I can live with the 50. I think the mail tax, the number that we have in there is somewhat low. I don't want to suggest changing it, but I think we got some leeway there. I think we had...
Bud, already put mail tax up 20 grand. We are tracking another 20. I might be able to go higher in the mail tax as well. I agree with you on that.
FY17, it was 138,000, right?
Yep.
Actual.
Yep.
FY17. And I think it's what, 140 on the budget now?
I'm carrying 140 in the estimates.
Okay.
Fiscal year 19 was 120.
Okay. It was 137 actual FY2017.
Yep, that's why we don't go to the max.
I know, I know. I like your conservative numbers. I'm just saying, there's some, there's some leeway here, that I think there's some more numbers coming.
The other thing I would have, like to have looked at very, very carefully, and that is personal property tax. Because the numbers I see, based on the numbers I've seen, it's somewhat low. And I don't have a good handle on what they could be. Now, for those people that don't really understand personal property tax, it's strictly commercial, industrial, and a simple example, if you take a building and turn it upside down, everything that falls out is personal property. And that is taxed. Now, if you take a town like Lennox, which has half the population, they have a personal property tax that's five times Groton's. So I would like to have somebody do a very detailed study on that. How much is it? What is it? Where's it come from?
Well, Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we bring in a consultant last year to do our personal property? And they found some more, but I think we do a pretty good job with it right now.
Yeah, we, thank you. We, I mean, our personal property growth is gonna come from two things. It's gonna come from four corners, and it's gonna come from the inn. And I think we were, I've got a preliminary number, I believe, from RRC, that that number is probably gonna be around 1.5 million for personal property growth. But, you know, you can have stuff fall off, too. There's been a couple of businesses that, they'll run Plaza, that, you know, have, you know, left, and, you know, then you gotta come for back in America, leaving. So, I mean, you get stuff that comes on, and you get stuff that comes off, but we, I don't know, but Lennox, they may have a higher percentage of businesses, I mean, I think we're at like 4% in town, so... You're gonna get, you get some big growth, big number growth, when you have it incoming. We have a four-corner project, but other than that, there's really no other place to get growth for personal property. Small businesses moving forward. We have a $10,000 exemption. I'm not sure Lennox has a $10,000 exemption either.
I'm not sure what the right number is, or the wrong number is. I'm just saying, I think we should take a close look at it.
We will.
Because I think it could bring in, I mean, we're trying to work to it, about, as Bud said, 250 grand. You know, every 10,000, 20,000, 30,000, to make a big dent in that.
I think 25, we did a, we did a full measurement list, either FY15 or FY16. And we, we did every single business in town at that point. I think the full measure was around 18,000 or 20,000 dollars. To do the full measurement list, then I think we got 75, we found 75, and, and so we added the 50. So, I mean, you do do that every once in a while. I mean, I would like to do it every five years, it just depends on if we have the budget to do it.
I have a question. It was mentioned that level funding for education is the same as last year?
No, I misspoke. When I say level funding, I meant that it's level funded to what their preliminary estimate was when Mark put the first five-year plan together. They're not level funded, but it's the same number as they put together when they put, the school gave us a five-year number. So when they gave us 2019 back in April, May, that number's still the same. It's up 5.33 from last, from this year, but all I was saying was, they didn't change the number. Like Mark said, some of these things have changed, like Neshoba Tech went up 100,000, what we estimated. The schools are still the same, because we haven't got a number from, it is up 5.33 from the current budget. So level funding to me was, they haven't changed the number yet, because they haven't given us the number, so Mark has left it alone. It represents a 5.33% increase over the prior year.
Right, I see that.
So that's, so level funding was...
I was trying to understand what the level funding is.
Yeah, no, I was using it in the sense of...
He was gonna say same as previous.
The same as the prior forecast. The same as the prior forecast. So it's not level funded, so I should have said same as prior forecast.
Thank you.
We have a 1,077 if they level funded their budget.
Have the number of students in the school district increased to justify the 5.3?
That was just based on to keep things the way they are and to maintain services, they needed to go at 5.33 based on current union agreements, that's no added anything, that's just like us, to keep things the way they are. The only difference is we are adding two new firefighters to our budget, which we did this year.
But remember the 5.33, like Mark said in the beginning, is based on the fact that 20, almost 30% is getting no funding from the state increase.
Correct.
So we're picking that up.
Yep.
So they're really spending around 4% of wages and salaries and that equals because of that state problem, 5.33 to us.
And if you, and the point that Bud and I talked about at length on Friday, which needs to be made clear here for everybody, is that if you take out the 108,000 savings, we're at 3.8%. So we're similar in growth. I, but their problem is their 27% state aid, we're 6% state aid.
Yeah, but what was it last year? Is it 27% is based on the number that gets from 5.3%?
Fiscal year 19, fiscal year 19 budget is 27%.
That represents the 10 million versus 40 million.
Correct.
That's what that represents. Their total budget's around 40 and the state's around 10.
10.9.
Yeah, so that's the problem, that they never get any increase out of it all in that 10 point, whatever it is. So when wages go up by three or 4%, we have to pick up the increase on that, us and Dunstable have to pick up that increase on that 10 million, that's a huge problem.
Couple of questions, Mark?
Please.
So just going back one more time, salaries based on current agreements are for FY '20 are about 145,000?
FY '19, it's about 145,000.
Okay, so for FY '20 it would be about 150?
Well, it might be a little bit more because the percentage is higher, yep.
And then incentive pay built in is around 35?
Yep.
Okay. And then can you tell me the percent increase over the FY, didn't FY '19 percent increase over the FY '18 budget?
I don't have that off the top of my head, David. I'll have to get that for you. You don't know that off the top of your head, Patricia, do you? No, I'll have to get that for you, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, it's all right, thank you.
I'm going like 5 including the school. Is it 5.3?
Questions on a couple of things that I just, I don't have an understanding into how they've been accounted for or where.
Yep.
We have kind of a draft OPEB policy, has that amount been included anywhere?
I want, no, because the proposal is to use free cash, so it would not impact operating revenues. Good question.
How about capital for either of the school districts?
Capital for the school district, we have set aside $600,000 at Fall Town Meeting. So when we go to the budget article at the Spring Town Meeting, the schools will assess us separately for capital. So it's in addition to that 1077, that will come from the schools' capital stabilization fund and the town will come from the town stabilization fund for capital. I'm estimating about 500,000 in capital for the town and I think the schools are at, I think their budget for next year, Allison, is 485. Does that sound about right?
But if Neshoba Tech comes in with capital, that can't come out of that.
That is, no, because that goes, well, you know, no, because the stabilization fund was set up specifically for Grotten Dunstable.
Okay.
When we get hit with a capital assessment, it's always coming out of the levy for the regional school. It always has. We've never funded it separately.
Okay.
That's an interesting question though. Think about that.
That's the question.
The question is, if they're going to, Patricia had said that they're going to increase their capital assessment this year, do we pay for it differently? That's a very good point. I'll have to think about that. Let's see what the number is and see what we can do.
You would want to pay for it out of the GDPR stabilization fund that we established?
Not from Neshoba Tech.
Not from Neshoba Tech.
Not from Neshoba Tech. That was the interesting part, that was the interesting question.
What's our risk of the capital assessment coming from Neshoba Tech?
It would be in their assessment. It wouldn't be separate, like when Grotten Dunstable gives us their assessment, they break it down, they break it down, operating, capital, debt, excluded and excluded.
If they had a major project though, wouldn't they have to go to the towns to approve on a project as opposed to just embedding it in their assessment?
It depends on the amount and what they're doing with it.
Right.
So, yes, but we approved a few years ago, our town meeting approved-
Correct.
A roof repair, I believe. And I'm not sure we've been hit with that.
Anything that's debt, they would have to get approval from town meeting.
But if they are doing it as part of the assessment and they're not bonding it, then it would be in the assessment. But they would, they would, they would have to come to the towns to authorize the bonding. They would have to get a majority of the towns, not all of the towns. So keep that in mind as well.
Okay.
Grotten could vote no, we could still get hit with it.
Do they add that into-
Their assessment.
The fee per, no, the fee per student?
I don't know.
Or is it outside of that?
I think it's included, but I don't know. John, I'd have to find out.
Mark, what is typically their timeframe in terms of budgeting?
They're about a month ahead of Grotten Dunstable because Westford's town meeting-
January.
Yeah, they're usually, February, first week of February is when they have the breakfast because their first town meeting is Westford, which is like in beginning of March. So they have to get it so many days before that meeting. So it's usually first week of February we get the assessment, right? And Grotten Dunstable is usually the first week of March is when the school committee certifies their budget.
And then the reassessments that are going on currently?
Yep.
Are there any adjustments included in here for that or would that be?
Yeah, that's a good question. Jonathan, the measuring list that's going on right now, the vision is doing from us, do you anticipate any more growth or did you include that in your 20 million number?
No, that's included.
You got to use the mic.
What I was going to say-
You got to use the mic, Jonathan.
Oh, sorry.
So the people at home can hear you. No, but the people at home can hear you.
What was the question?
The measure, the full measuring list that we're doing right now, is that in the 20 million or expecting more?
No, that's, and that's the thing that's kind of factored in. So we've been going over the proper record cards, so we started in West Rock and moved in east. And what we've seen is very, pretty accurate, but we're seeing, you know, like a forge, there was a screen, forge might have been converted to a living area, we're seeing deaths, maybe a bigger death than what we had, nothing major. So I think when I was budgeting, when I was thinking about the growth, I wasn't going to, it takes a lot of deaths and a lot of conversions to get to a million bucks in growth. So it wasn't, I wasn't figuring a lot, but it did factor in a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Can you go over-
Want me to go back to the salaries?
I'm done, I promise. Fair enough, fair enough.
I'm sorry, David.
That's all right, that's all right. Anticipate a new revenue.
Yeah.
Conservative number, understand your philosophy.
Yep.
Could we talk about maybe a proposed schedule or framework about increasing, if you chose to increase that number, under what timeframe you might do it, presumably by the end of this year when the budget's due? Once you hit that deadline, would you anticipate increasing that number again before town meeting?
Well, you know, that's a good, that's a great question. What we do when we put together estimated receipts, Patricia does an amazing job of tracking those and she takes the 10-year average, the five-year average and the three-year average. And we usually budget at the five-year average. 10 years, you have a lot of things, but what concerns me a little bit about looking at the three and the five-year averages, we've had two major building permits come in this town in the last two years. Indian Hill permit and the Grotten Inn permit were very substantial and the, actually three, the Temple permit. Those were substantial building permits and that really jacked up our free cash and it jacked up our estimated receipts one-time increases. I don't see any major projects coming down the pipe from the planning board or anybody else where we're going to see those kind of numbers. So I like staying at the five-year estimate, but I will tell you, Patricia updates the income monthly in the first six months of the fiscal year. So when we, when we start putting the final budget together in December and we finalize the estimates, David, Patricia will have four months' worth of fiscal year 19, fiscal year 19 rather, under her belt. And we can look at that as a trend as well to determine where we want to go. So will that $80,000 number go higher? It's definitely going to go $50,000 higher with the occupancy tax. You may see another 20 in the meals tax, the way that's going right now, that's trending very high. You know, Forging Vine opened this week, great progress, they put the sign on the building next door, so they named the restaurant, so I'm thinking they're going to be opening soon. The sign's on it, so I'm thinking they're going to be opening soon. So I might be comfortable jacking up that meals tax even more than we have budgeted right now. We may put it up another 20 by the time we do it. So yes, David, that's a long way to say yes.
I defer to you on whether going up, I was more interested in the schedule, the timeframe. Are you comfortable with setting an anticipated revenue by December 31st when you get the budget out and holding that number throughout the budgeting process?
Yeah, the only thing that will change is new growth.
And when would that?
That would be the following October, which is unfortunate, that is after the budget is set, but-
Be careful, because you've adjusted your anticipated revenue number after December 31st in the past and what he's asking you to do is not to do that. If I understand you right.
Fair enough. December 31st and October 30th, those two dates. You could stick with just those two dates for adjusting new revenue.
Yeah, I think I, if you want me to hold to that, I mean, sometimes what we change, Gary, I'm going to disagree with you, I don't think I change the revenue estimates as much as I change the budget estimates, because then we get the, health insurance comes in, the Shova Tech number gets revised, the school budget gets revised. We pretty much hold the line on revenues from December on with the exception-
Well, the reason why I know why, what Mr. Manu Dean is asking you is because we've talked about it explicitly in the finance committee meeting and I know he has concerns about that number changing after the 31st because it has in the past.
So, Mark, I'll defer to you on the number. I just want to be comfortable with the schedule if the others are here, that once we set a number December 31st, it's not going to change until at the end of October, whatever date you guys tell us.
I'm trying to think, do we change that number a lot?
Occasionally we'll adjust local receipts if we feel that they're trending in a particular direction. Everything has to be done by the tax recap. So when we're doing our tax recap right now, that's nailing down revenue for FY '19 right now. So once that's done, then we can't adjust revenue for FY '19 any longer.
I don't think I touched estimated receipts this year.
You do it all the time.
That's fine, but are you comfortably forward with two dates during the year?
Let me think about that. Now that, now you have me thinking that, let me go back and see what I've done. I mean, you know, one of the things though is motor vehicle excise first commitment comes in in January and so that, you know, if I see a big number there, I may want to change the number. So why do you want to, why do you want to hold me to that number? I'm a little confused as to why you want, why you're so hard on December 31st, can you expand that to me?
No, no, the date doesn't matter, I'm just, I'd like to get how many times a year for our planning purposes to understand when we may be seeing changes. And maybe it's three times a year, if you want to see-
Well, my, well, here's, here's this, I have to give you a balanced budget on December 31st. That balanced budget on December 31st is based on what I think the revenues are going to be 18 months in advance of June 30, 2020, right? So I'm really, you know, I try to be as conservative as possible when I put that number forward. As the time goes by, up until town meeting, I don't think I've changed them that much other than maybe motor vehicle excise tax if we get some new information. So I'll tell you this, December 31st, March 1st, October 31st, those are the three dates that we'll adjust revenues. Are you comfortable with that? Patricia?
Yes, ma'am.
Jonathan?
Yeah.
Michael?
I have the feeling that as we move towards the 31st of December, this column of numbers will change a little bit.
It's absolutely going to change.
Could I ask that somebody take on the responsibility of maintaining a master spreadsheet with columns that reflect the date of each time we make modifications so we can see the track of those changes over time?
We can do that, but I will just say, like, he's providing this information as a way to provide information for us so we can provide guidance. So I'm, I hear you and I'm sort of okay doing it, but I'm also nervous because people hold the town manager to these numbers and say, why did this number go up? When he's just like, you know, this is like 24 months in advance of anything and I made a guess. So I'm a little nervous about tracking it that closely because-
As am I.
Because-
Put that in the minutes.
And in fact, two years ago when we had this meeting, he said he was going to put the sheet out and I said I wouldn't put it out in this detail, I'd put the top level numbers because you're going to get held against it. And he said, I'm going to do this, and then he got held against it.
But I think, I like John's idea to me, the idea of, I don't care how many times it's updated or tweaked, but having that ability particularly as a relative newbie to go back and say, oh, why did this number go up? Oh, that's right, we talked about that, we talked about this.
Well, yeah, because I'm going to tell you, in two weeks, that's a very good point. In two weeks, that anticipated 2.5% increase in unexpendanted tax capacity number is definitely going to change because he's going to get new growth certified. I think it's going to be higher. Those two numbers are going to change. So, you know, I think that's a fair point.
For those purposes, I think you should do it. I'm just a little, right, you just, people have to understand what these numbers are, right? They're not accurate.
Understood, and if we track it as we go along, then you'll also be able to see kind of that progression as opposed to if you look now and then you look again in three months and something's gone up by significant amounts.
Yeah, I think John's talking about not tracking tons of detail, he's tracking this sheet here, this, here's the sheet. There's only like 10 numbers on it.
First column is today.
You know, so like Allison says-
Am I going to get penalized if the numbers are that far off?
No.
No.
Because I think the, I think the challenge here is, what new information do we get to change these? Adjusted based on a new restaurant permit, adjusted based on this, I think, I think it's more like, hey, we got new information, therefore we adjusted some numbers. And actually, in my opinion, that tends to show a much more appropriately guesstimated budget because as new information comes in up until the deadline of the 31st of December, the 1st of March and October 31st, you know, that's why we're changing, right? So I think that, you know, there's a lot of information, there's, you're showing a, and I'm not going to repeat the number because I don't want to astonish people, but there is a, there's a mismatch between, between revenue and spending right now and we're going to close that gap as we always do. And it'd be interesting for us to understand how that happens, but I don't want people to be thinking we're playing some funky games behind the scenes, the numbers make a match. It's just the way things work this far out. And the point here is not to hold revenue and, and budget numbers to mark more to give guidance on, he's kind of giving us a lay of the land, so we have an opportunity to know what's, what's possible and possible and we're not asking for the impossible so that we can move forward and say, this is what we'd like to see on December 31st. And then we can start debating the smaller numbers.
Yeah, Barry, 100% correct because when you look at this, Neshoba Tech, I don't get the number until February, we're in October. Grotten Dunstable, I don't get the number until March, we're in October. Health insurance, I don't get the number until-
February.
February, I'm in October. County retirement is probably the one number that we can say for sure that's going to be the number.
It is.
Yep.
Two-year cycle.
Yep, so I know that county retirement number is, right now, today, that county retirement is that only accurate number up on that screen.
Okay, so it has the highest probability of not changing.
Thank you, yes.
And I'm not as convinced as him, that is a lot.
You know, salaries, you know, salaries is, is right now, I just took the total balance and increased it by a certain percentage. I don't know what the department heads, they're, they're doing their reviews right now of their employees. I'm doing my reviews right now. So, you know, that number's going to change. So, and you know, the expenses, I just checked in 1%. I don't know. Medicare is probably close to where it's going to be, and the two new firefighters is probably close to where it's going to be. So, this is a, just a...
I think that tracking it as we move forward also has tremendous advantage, kind of logistically, in these types of meetings, so that we are all looking at, you know, oh, the sheet that was most recently updated, January 3rd, or whatever that date is, as opposed to, you know, me looking at Bud's to try and see whether my numbers line up with his numbers, or whether I'm two weeks...
Don't ever try to figure out what he has on his paper. It's impossible.
He has a napkin.
But I think if, if we do do that, and we explain in, in these public meetings why something changed, it may help educate the public on the volatility and, and the variables that we're dealing with constantly.
I will tell you, Josh is watching this meeting very carefully, and, you know, he listened to what you had to say, Bud. He thinks the guidance should be in the 2.3% range to the town manager, as opposed to your 2.54%. Of course, I'm more comfortable with Bud's 2.54%.
Well, so here's the thing, right? At, at 2.54%, we're 250 in the hole already, right? And the one thing that hasn't been talked about, and now you get to hear my, my annual spiel, is, right, I mean, people look at the 108.646 decrease, and they're like, "Oh my God, like, why is he taking..." Like, we've known this is coming for years. It's been in his five-year forecast. And we actually thought that FY 20 would be a really easy year for us because of that, right? That, that we were pretty much balanced, and it turns out that right now, we're still not balanced. So, if you think about next year, you should be really afraid. You should be really afraid. And all we're talking about is this year. So, um, I guess the one thing that I would add, I think 2.54 is fine, because I don't think you can even get there, because of the fact that we're already imbalanced. But I would also state, there's now a conversation around the rooms tax and bumping it up by 50K. I'd like to see that go immediately to unexpendanted tax capacity, because we're gonna need unexpendanted tax capacity. I mean, not only are we taking the 108.646 advantage this year, but we're also taking advantage of the fact that we have $80,000 unexpendanted tax capacity, right? If we, if we bring this right to the bone and come in with $0 unexpendanted tax capacity, and next year we don't have county, we start next year almost 200K in the hole. So, I actually think, I'm okay with the 2.54. I'm completely okay with that as, as a guidance, and balanced with no override. But I personally would like to see, see, and I don't know that I need to even officially make, make this part of the guidance, but I would really like to see the, um, at least the room tax, if not some number greater than the room tax, go to unexpendanted tax capacity this year.
So, you want a balanced budget, not taxed to the max?
I want beyond the balanced budget. I want us to be under the levy capacity this year.
Is there a reason you want that just for this year? I mean, because you foresee next year and the year after being much, much worse?
I'm not even looking to, I'm just looking at next year.
I mean, you're not proposing that as a, uh, that we set that as policy for, for the foreseeable future. You're just saying this year.
That is correct. I mean, you know, we actually set it as a policy, and Mark very diligently increased us to the point where we were half a million under levy capacity, which thank God he did, because all of a sudden, when we had sort of the, you know, the fiscal challenge, where the schools all of a sudden needed a million and a half, and a 1.2, I think it was, in one year, we were under levy capacity to get there. Right now, you know, we're so close every single year that we, you know, if, if something big comes up, we're in trouble.
So, basically, you're saying, even though we're going, we know we're gonna get rooms tax money, we should be setting that aside in a savings account for the following year?
Right, and the one thing about using that to do unexpendanted tax capacity is, I think, I think what I heard everybody saying when we were passing it, is they liked the notion, because it would mean that we would tax people less. Well, if we use that towards unexpendanted tax capacity, you know for a fact that people are paying less, because we're not taxing them that, because we're under the levy capacity.
Follow-up on Bud's 2.54. I assume that does not include additional spending at fall town meeting?
Well, when we start this process, there is never any additional spending at fall town meeting, until the fall town meeting gets there. I mean, there's stuff that happens, you know, the 2.54 was for the spring.
So, you're right, David. It does not include fall. Usually, fall is capital items, as we know, but that's not the only thing that happens at fall town meeting.
And I have to clarify more to say, this is guidance for the budget that he's gonna prepare for December 31st, right? Once he hands it to us, then the real work goes of creating the budget, we're bringing the town meeting, that growth rate can be anything, right? That's just the guidance for the, the budget that he's gonna present to us.
And, and keep in mind, I had this conversation with someone today. Um, we have two annual town meetings, okay? And that was done on purpose when they created the charter, because you, you set an operating budget in the spring, you don't know what happens until you, you know, you set the tax rate in the fall, so you have the second annual town meeting to adjust. So, we should call it the continuation of the spring town meeting, because that's used to balance the budget before Jonathan and Patricia set the tax rate. So, I like having that debate with you, David, and others.
No. You told us during the earlier part of just the select board meeting, that you expect the task force on firefighters...
Yep.
...to come in with a recommendation for December 31st.
That is their plan, and after getting a text message from the chief tonight, I'm not sure how accurate that statement was earlier, but their plan is to have a recommendation to the select board and the finance committee in time for the budget. Whatever they come up with will not be part of my preliminary budget to you, because if they come back and say they wanna go full-time 24/7, say that's their recommendation, 2.54% guidance isn't gonna cut.
Right.
So, I think that has to be a separate discussion. I'm glad you brought that up, Becky. That has to be a separate discussion.
Other than if they come in saying, "We think..."
We're good.
"...the two people that we've just added, we should continue them, and that's enough."
Correct. They may do that too, Becky. They may do that too. So...
One last question, one last. Are you planning any more benefited positions above and beyond firefighters?
I'm glad you asked that question. No. The guidance to the department heads is going to be, is based on me looking at the numbers and anticipating what you're, you're telling me tonight. When I meet with them next Tuesday, a week from, on Wednesday...
A week from Wednesday?
A week from Wednesday, is going to be, maintain what you have, no new positions, because we can't afford any new positions on the municipal side. So, you have my word. I will not be asking, unless something comes up in the next month, which I don't see happening.
We need to save the meeting for next Wednesday, good job.
There'll be no new positions.
See, you just gave your word, and then immediately redone.
I know, I like that. I did that. That's, you know, I like to throw some spin, because there's no spin zone. So, I'm, I'm gonna say, David, no.
Okay.
At this point. I don't anticipate it.
So, Bud, do you wanna make a motion for the finance committee's guidance?
Wait, can I just ask another question first?
Let's not interrupt FinCom proceedings.
Let me ask...
I'm okay to defer.
All right.
Could we go back to what we know about the schools? Because last year, we'd had a meeting jointly with them by this time of year, and this year, they haven't asked for one.
There's been discussions, Bud.
I, I...
Well, it hasn't happened, is what I'm saying. So, I haven't heard anything directly from them. Are we relying on an estimate of what they're gonna need that was...
I can answer you.
Okay.
I got a phone call from Mike Knight, the business manager from the schools, Dr. Chesson, and he would like to meet with me and my finance team. I'm gonna meet next Tuesday afternoon. I imagine Matt is going to set the parameters. I'll give them, I'm gonna share this information with them. They'll share their information with me, and if it needs to be moved up to the board's level, I'm sure that's when it'll, it'll move up to the board level. But we're gonna start administratively, just at least talking about these numbers that you have tonight, and their numbers to me. So, I would imagine right after that, Becky, it'll happen.
So, the 5.33% that you're basing this on was an estimate from some years...
From last year, last April.
From the beginning last year.
Correct. It's the best number I have at this time.
And no, no one has heard anything that would say, "Well, that's a really not reliable number."
I'll, I'll know better next Wednesday.
Right.
Good question.
So, so with regard to the schools, I was just looking back, and they published a newsletter, the school committee published a newsletter monthly, and the September version, they're up, had a, kind of their, their version of some budget preliminary things, guidance, and that sort of thing. And it looks like, Bud and I were just looking at it, it looks like their current fiscal 20 anticipated assessment to us is gonna be about $70,000 less than what we're carrying here right now.
Nice.
So, certainly not, I don't think, appropriate to start adjusting these numbers, with or without another column, but it, I would take that as hopefully at least a nod that we're not looking at a number that's significantly higher.
It's good news.
Good.
Yeah, I think, to be clear, right when Bud says 2.54, that doesn't include the schools. That's just municipal growth.
That's correct.
So, if he were to move shortly, a motion that says our guidance is no more than 2.54 without excluded debt, with a balanced budget, with no override, that doesn't in any way limit what this, or suggest anything for the schools.
Right. Matter of fact, that is the motion.
Did you get all that? Go ahead.
You picked it right off.
What a great motion, Bud.
Do you want a second?
I'll second it.
I figured I'd help you out.
I had it written down, but I'll, I'll second what you just said.
No, you're first to get it.
So, 2.54%, not including excluded debt.
Right. That's the municipal budget.
Municipal budget.
Balanced budget.
Balanced budget, no override.
Right.
I got it.
Select board with 10K for the included debt.
With the 10K for the, yeah, that's in the debt.
That's part of, that's part of the 2.5.
Part of the 2.54, yes.
But it can't be 0 or minus 10. It's gotta be...
So, Bud moved into our ear, second?
Second.
Okay. Barry?
No, you guys continue your voting, please, I'm old.
Well, I just wanted to get that on the floor. We can have further discussion amongst you, the board, if there's any further discussion. I'm not trying.
So, I guess I'll ask this procedurally. Is there a select board wish to join the motion, or are there one or more member? We only need one or more, by the way. We only need two, in fact, two not. Is there more than one member who wishes to not join that motion?
Well, I was going to go back to what was reported to us, that Josh is watching this meeting, but he's not participating on the telephone, to make the case. I don't understand why he would be saying he thinks it should be 2.3, and I'd be interested to hear that.
So, without speaking for Josh, just knowing historically...
Maybe Josh is answering that now.
Fortunately, we have...
Oh, Josh is answering that right now.
So, we have texted or tweeted?
No, he just called.
Okay.
Do you want me to get you on the, on the main speakerphone?
Yeah, we can make this a participation then, and be, let's be of all board about this. Thank you.
So, Barry, to your question, I'm comfortable with the things that FinCom has, has put into their motion. I would like to see some of the other kind of logistical details added into that motion, more so they're captured, in terms of the, the revenue change dates, um, you know, the, the approach of keeping track of things in columns as they go along, um, and then the addition of no new benefited positions. I would like to see those in the motion.
Okay.
Hold on a second, Josh.
Go, Josh.
Go, Josh. You're on.
Good evening.
Good evening. The caller is yours.
Why? I think 2.3. Is that the question, Becky?
That's, that's the question.
That was my question, yes.
Well, I think that the anticipated, uh, revenues from the mail tax, uh, growth is low. I think that there certainly will be additional money, uh, through the revales that Vision is working on with the assessors. I also think that the room occupancy tax, and, and I do agree with what Mark was saying, uh, the number of $50,000, I think, is a good number. But also, Allison pointed out, there's savings potentially on the school side, and I think that while you do have a $250,000 gap between revenue and expenditures to bridge, that setting the bar at 2.54 is potentially high, and it doesn't make us work to bring the number down. By setting the number down to 2.3, it makes the work harder to bridge that gap, but I also think that the job in, in terms of doing the hard work to save the taxpayers' money is to try and squeeze that sponge as dry as you can. So, if the number ultimately cannot be achieved, and I know Mark doesn't wanna come back and say, "Hey, look, I can't hit 2.3," but I think to, again, to set it higher than, or set it at a height of 2.5 plus, it doesn't make us do the hard work to achieve taxpayer savings. That's all.
Well, I, I, I understand what Josh is saying, but even at 2.54, I, I, I have a problem with, with the schools. So, with the school assessment, so regardless if it's 2.54, or 6.92, or 10.52, I have to come in with a balanced budget. So, you know, if you, you know, 2.3, 2.54, we're talking about what? $50,000, $80,000, $90,000? So, I, I, of course, I understand where Josh is coming from, but I, I like the 2.54 number, obviously.
Procedurally, I think FinCom can still take their vote with regular, but we have to take ours now with roll call. Just put that out there.
I mean, I, I think there's some validity, good validity, in what Josh is saying. If we, we don't have a little pressure saying, "Look for wherever you can bring it down." We'll get too comfortable with that. I'm new to this whole process, but, um, I guess we could call it the stretch. The equivalent of, of the stretch component of building on energy savings, to put a little something that's, with a reasonable challenge for us, and see how we can come out. Now, if somebody's gonna say, "Well, you say 5.3 tonight, you're married to it forever," then I don't think that's, that's a productive exercise. But if we try for that, and, and have some understanding that it may not be practical to make that number, when we look at all the things considered, um, and maybe, you know, we say you can't go higher than 5.54.
No, 5.5.
I mean, 2.5, no, we have 5.
Well, give me 5.54.
We can't go higher than that, but let's see if we can get to 2.3.
All right, was Josh was proposing...
2.3.
No. 3.4.
2.3.
Josh, 2.3 is your projection, your proposal?
Yes.
2.3, I mean, I looked at the numbers when Mark sent out the email. I, I, I didn't scan them to the nth degree that Bud does, but also, I think that some, some efficiencies can be achieved, and, and some additional revenues can be extracted. So, I really think it's a laudable goal to go for 2.3, and if Mark can't make that number, then we come back and we revisit it in the future.
The revenues have nothing to do with the budget growth.
Yeah, right.
So, that's mixing apples, and apples and on, just a little bit. However, the one thing I would ask you to take into consideration, we made a decision based on my recommendation to hire two new firefighters this year, and now I have to absorb an additional $80,000 for the full year salary. Now, if you wanna go 2.3 and take out that $80,000, I'm fine with it, but give me 2.54, because I gotta come up with 80 grand because of full year firefighters. So, that puts me behind the eight ball. I'm still got a problem at 2.54 with that 80 grand, and I think I can do what Josh is telling me to do at 2.0, what he's saying, the 2.3, but please give me the fact to take into consideration, I got $80,000 or $72,000, whatever that number is, but that's brand-new spending for next year, because keep in mind, we're only in six months this year.
I'd rather keep the 80K in there, 'cause 0.24 is not gonna be 80K.
I agree. No, I, I, I agree 100%.
It's gonna be like 30 something.
Yeah, but I'm fine with that.
The 80K should, I think, should remain in there. I think, I mean, what I heard Bud say, and I know what I meant, and I also, I think I heard Mark say as well, is, you know, the 2.54 is not the gating factor. It's, it's, it's the revenue. And again, if you wanna put a reach on, then, then I'd suggest you adopt my suggestion of, of adding guidance, that he stay at least $50,000 under the levy limit, because that reduces the revenue even more for someone to reach even deeper. But I, I think 2.54 reflects what he currently thinks realistic increases are, without doing anything crazy on the increase side.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Gary. I think, though, 2.54 represents, first of all, like you said, we're not there. We're gonna find 250K to get to 2.54.
Right.
So, if you raise revenue by some amount, you're still not there. So, to me, the 2.54 is a challenge two ways. One is, you gotta, if you can't get revenue, which you can't, I don't believe you can get that much revenue, you gotta say, "Hopefully, the schools will come in with something safe," like, maybe. And the other part is, some of the other spending, we have to look at what we're doing, like the, the ones we already just went through. You know, the 8K here, the 30K here. So, by definition, you're not gonna, whether it's 2.3 or 2.54, which is 30 something K, which is 30K, 30's K, but I think this, I think that, the reason I was okay with the 2.54 was the fact that there's a 250K hole. You can't spend, and if, in fact, you get enough revenue, or other things save out for the school, because again, we're talking the municipal budget. We're not talking the total budget. The 2, the 2.54 is the municipal in levy operating budget.
Correct.
So, that number is different than the total budget, which is gonna be a bigger number, obviously, because of the school. So, you can get savings from the school, that'll help out the municipal budget, or you can get more, that's the only place you got, or you get more revenue, or you gotta say, "How can I not spend 2.54 for municipal?" Because that number will get squeezed down. By definition, you can't spend it. It's nothing to do with the, how much more revenue you're getting, unless you go over $250,000. It's nothing to do with how much more revenue you're getting, unless you go over $250,000 in revenue you're going to find. Otherwise, you got to squeeze the spending anyways. You can't get there. It's not going to add up. So 2.54 to me said, that's a good number because it would be different if we had enough revenues to go spend 2.54. And it's got numbers that say, okay, try to save money. This one, you got to save money to get anything because it's already in the hole. It's starting out $250,000 in the hole. And I think there are ways to get back. But I don't know. And so when budget comes in, we can still get the budget from Mark and his balance. We can say, we don't like the balance. We don't like the fact, we want 50K more to go into this because we got a problem next year we want to start working with. So how do we figure that problem out when we get it? I don't know. But at least this gets you to, can you get this number balanced being 250K in the hole? To me, that's a pretty big go-get unless all of a sudden magically we find 250K in revenue, which I don't think we will.
Not going to have.
So I think there's a go-get built in here that we men, we men need to figure out when we get to the budget, and maybe at that time he will have, because he can only spend 2.54. So if he spends, he finds it and spend it, by the schools coming in last and he gets another 100, whatever, any revenue above that 2.54 is going to drop into the bucket because he can only spend 2.54, which has nothing to do with the revenue line because it's higher than that. He can't spend the, let's assume he find 350,000 K in revenue. He can't spend that 100. He can only spend 250 because that is the, he can only spend 2.54 spending, which is that he's short 250. So he can't spend that extra revenue. So Bud, he's going to say, you can't spend it. We've already said you can't spend it. You got to balance the budget, only spending 2.54. So you got to find $250,000 to get to that number. Anything above that, we say.
So Mark, what was our guidance last year? Do you recall?
Your guidance, the finance committee's guidance was to come in at 2.5% or 2.8% or something like that. And the board of selectmen's guidance was to balance the budget and meet the needs of the schools.
Right.
So I had two different sets of guidance from the selectmen, and I think I met both of them.
I think we did. I'd prefer to avoid giving two different sets of...
Josh is no longer on the line, so the board can vote without roll call.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, Josh's number is 30K difference, lower. That's, but again, to me, when you...
So his 2.3 is 30K lower?
Yeah.
And right now...
35K or something.
Right, so you sort of implied that maybe the school is 70K lower, who knows? You implied that Neshobetech is maybe 25, so that's 100K. If we put in 50K for the rooms, that's 150K. He still has to go down 100K, not 30K, which is what Josh, I guess, is sort of implying.
Yeah, some say there's a big, there's a big go-get in the number right now.
Yeah.
So whether it's another, it's a big go-get to me right now because it's the wrong side of the number.
So we have some cross-talk here, and I apologize, but Allison wanted to request certain things be put into a motion. I've certainly never known Mark to not follow the will of the board when it comes to things like that, and I think the board's in agreement. If you want it codified, I wouldn't necessarily make it part of budget guidance, I would make it part of policy going forward, that that's what we, you know, that's just kind of what we need to see from preliminary, you know, adjustments. Happy to take a vote on that, but I don't know that there's any disagreement from Mark. And so I ask, it's your, you know, you want to have it codified, so just give me some realities here and help me understand.
I mean, I guess I would like to have it in there, not because of any lack of trust, but just so that it's there.
I'm sorry, I'm totally lost in what you're talking about.
So Allison wanted to add into the motion, if I, and I won't, I'm not trying to speak for her, I'm just trying to repurpose, which said was the discussion about when numbers are adjusted, they're in a spreadsheet with commentated that they've been adjusted. That was one item. Perhaps there was another item, Allison?
Yeah, the change in revenue dates and then the request for no new benefited positions.
Sure. Certainly the no new benefited positions can be a budget guidance and should be.
No new benefited positions?
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
I mean, I'm sure you are too. And by the way, I think Mark's fine with both those being added in.
Yep.
But, and the question here is, would FinCom accept both those as friendly amendments to their motion?
Well, do you guys want to put something on the table, then we'll look if we want to amend?
That's up to the board. I mean, so there is, there is, there is a challenge, right? We have, have, we do have challenges, and we would like to avoid that challenge, having two different, although not impossible, we are different yet, differently equal boards with different ideas and different policies to move through.
Yeah, so just put your...
We've had one, we've had one, one suggestion of 2.3. Becky was on that, is, have you?
No, I wanted to have...
You've asked her for that explanation. You've gotten that explanation.
Explanation.
Is anybody ready to move forward on the board with either the FinCom's number or a different number they'd like to propose?
I'm totally ready to move forward 2.54. I like Bud's motion. Whoever made the motion.
All right. So Allison, do you want to incorporate the motion, please?
John, you can read back if you have it.
I have, I have it. I just wrote it down. So no increase greater than 2.54%. Balanced budget, no override, no new benefited positions, track changes in estimates. That's what I heard.
2.54 municipal budget.
2.54 municipal budget.
Without excluded debt.
Yeah, do we need to say without?
Oh, without excluded debt. Oh, God, yes. Please, let's put that in there.
Yeah.
Someone help me understand, I keep hearing this, municipal budget, and then it sounds like the schools aren't in the municipal budget.
They're not.
They're not.
But I have to give you a balanced budget including the schools. You may tell me to keep the spending 2.54. My budget has to include both Neshobetech and...
So he can only spend 2.54 if the whole budget balances. Yeah, so the 2.54 without excluded debt tells him what he can do, and then balanced budget with override says you now have to take into account what the schools want and still balance the budget, which means he probably can't hit 2.5 more.
That's exactly what you said.
John, you calling out?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I will go back to...
Do you have all that done?
I will go back to Mark's statement, and so will it.
Yeah, I heard that. It's been moved. Is there a second from the board of selectmen?
Second.
Select board, excuse me, apologize.
Sorry, I'm seconding her.
Is there anyone on the finance committee who would like to amend Bud's motion to match the board of, the select board's motion? Bud, do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Don't vote. Josh wants to be part of this vote, so I got to get him back on the phone.
Okay.
Well, FinCom could vote, I'm sorry. I apologize.
FinCom can take their vote without us. We'll per se usually wait.
All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye. I heard it unanimously. We've matched the guidance so far. If we, both boards vote honestly on it at this point.
Please wait.
I don't think there's any real issue with this, but I feel a little uncomfortable in kind of in and out of participation.
I agree. Josh is back on the phone, Barry.
Josh, are you aware of the motion on the floor?